All right, let's go ahead and call to order our work session. This is intended to be a work session to catch us up to date on where we are in the ARPA process. So I will, if anything you want to say beforehand, otherwise Dave is here to go ahead from Guide House to go ahead and give us-
Oh, I thought I was supposed to go first.
No.
I'm telling you what to do. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right.
You got it ordered, Commissioner. But I'll go ahead, Dave, if you'll go ahead and take it away for us, please.
Can I be here today? Report that we've got here, we're going to go through some initial findings, survey, idea and proposals, and next steps, I'll walk through that as well. So, big picture, we're finished with Phase Two, which was the collection of proposals and the collection of surveys. So we wrapped that up at the end of last week. We did receive 250 proposals from the county here on Monday, so we've been working through all that. Of course, they're some of the most detailed ones we've received, to no one's surprise. So, we've got as much data as possible here for this presentation, but some of it we're still churning through. And then we are looking forward to that August final report, which we'll talk about here at the end. So, initial findings, this was a redo of the "By the Number" slide we had last time. So we met with 33 meetings with disparate impacted groups, six community forums, 3,667 survey responses came through, we had 1,299 ideas, 316 completed proposals, and all of the ideas totaled $1.9 billion, so we had a lot of ideas out there that came through the portal. So, one thing we did, and we'll talk about it here, is we did make some adjustments between the portal and the ideas, and you can see the plus and minus 60 there. So what happened was, we have two ways that ideas can come through. One was through the survey where we had the ideas, and one is through the proposal portal. What we decided to do is take proposals that did not specifically give an amount of money for a specific project, and we recoded those as ideas, because we didn't see those as full proposals. And so that's how they're going to be dealt with going forward, because they didn't have exact details on what they were exactly looking for. To give an example, something like Kent County should use money to build affordable housing. If that came through the proposal portal, we moved it over to the ideas, in the way that we're considering that going forward. So how are we processing all this? We're kind of starting with all those ideas that were received and uploaded, and then we're trying to figure out, does that match a proposal? So we can start bundling things, and with that then create themes. What are the themes that are coming through this process? And then, how do those themes relate back to those priority groups that we started with? So that's kind of our decision-making process there. So, going into the survey, this is the similar trend that we saw at the last time we spoke. The only difference is it's leveled out a little bit. But overall, a similar statement, that if you were to do a combination of community health, quality of life, and infrastructure projects, that 81% of respondents would have their number-one priority group met. So I think that's the big takeaway there.
Excuse me, David, is that measuring dollars or just individual proposals?
Just, this was just individual people saying, what is their number-one priority We did talk a little bit about gaps, and I want to talk about the gaps and how we've solved those, and what that outcome looks like. So, originally, we had median income reported at 100 to 109,000, which is quite above the Kent County median, so we wanted to try to get that down. We were successful in moving that median bracket down in our overall dataset. We originally only had 3% of Hispanic respondents, which was less than the county overall. We were able to double that percent. And lugs surrounding Grand Rapids were underrepresented, and we were able to increase representation of several of the lugs around Grand Rapids. So what does this mean, big picture? Our data is more representative of your county, and that was the goal going into this.
Local unit of government.
Yeah.
What is the new median income?
The new median income is down to the $90,000.
And you moved it down just by seeking more survey responses?
Yep, it was simply focusing on underrepresented groups across the board was able to pull that number down.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, again, thinking about, just from the survey standpoint, what is that priority group narrative coming out of that data? This is a visualization on the left of just the priority groups, and how large the magnitude is of top respondent. And again, that is that community health being the largest thing. And also, as we look at all the different cross-sectional groups, community health continually is the number-one choice across all groups. So that is consistent regardless of how we break this down. So then we go to the proposals. This is kind of the proposal broken out by theme, and I do stress tentative, because we're going to want to go back through all this and make sure that things are bundled properly. And we are starting to look at that eligibility framework as we think about these themes. But you can see those all listed out there, with parks and rec at 54, workforce development at 47, specific proposals in on down. And then on the left, you can see the breakdown by those priority groups. Again, seeing economic development with 90, which is interesting considering how it's coming through on the survey itself. So we've got a lot of specific ideas, but maybe not a ton of survey energy around that. And so, we'll want to think about how to balance those different things in the narrative. Any questions?
So just, just to confirm, then, the kind of proposal, or this number only reflects the proposals, the surveys have not yet been incorporated into the themes?
Yep, so we have, and I'm going to get to this at the end, we have layers, and then I'm going to show you how the layers are going to come together to make our cake, right? So that is the next steps. So this is the data, the one thing I haven't gotten into here, because we weren't able to get to it, because of the time, is we now want to go back to all those ideas, and pair them up with those themes that we create for the proposals, and start creating that narrative. So, we've got a final report coming up, and I think it's important to ask ourselves, why do we even need a final report? So that we know what we're going forward towards. So the first step is to organize the process. We want to group these things by theme, so that it can help you focus on high-level priorities. 300 proposals can overwhelm a decision-making process, especially with a body this size. So by able to isolate these decisions, it makes it easier to move forward. We also want to note that review will be limited only to eligible projects. So we will pull those things out that are explicitly not eligible under ARPA, so we don't have to be looking at those. And then Guide House is doing that initial assessment to make sure that you have those notes and insights around these projects, and what is, you know, sustainable, what does the impact look like, things of that nature. And then I want to note that we are also looking closely at collaboration and expansion opportunities. So, are there opportunities that organizations have presented that can allow collaboration across organizations or across governments? Whether that's other cities and townships in Kent County or the state? So how can we create collaboration on projects? So that's why we've got a final report. And what does that kind of look like? So as I said, the layers here. So we've got the three parts to it, and we want to pull that all together in a narrative. So we have the survey, which is painting a broad picture on how do these priority groups sit with the community? We have priority, or proposals, which are being reviewed for eligibility, feasibility, sustainability, and impact, and then grouped by theme. And then we're taking all those ideas and also grouping those by theme. And as you can see below, this is kind of an example on how that narrative starts getting made. These are examples, these are made-up numbers. So for instance, arts and culture might be a theme. And arts and culture touches quality of life and economic development. And there may be 10 specific proposals that speak to arts and culture, and 200 ideas that speak to arts and culture. And if you were to select something within arts and culture, you would align with 80% of respondents' first choice. In comparison, affordable housing would touch quality of life, community health, and economic development. There were 50 proposals, 100 ideas, and this would align with 95% of respondents' first choice. So you can see how we're taking each piece and trying to stack it up, so we can understand it in context with everything else, and then bundle those, so that you can make decisions easier. Does that make sense? Any questions on this?
Great. I guess that once we start doing that, there'll be lots of questions.
Yes, I'm sure. So, this is the final slide here of decision-making thoughts from Guide House, recommendations we've seen on how to go through this process. Again, it's a lot of proposals being dealt with, a large, diverse body. So, the recommendation we say is we focus on those themes with the highest agreement with the community. Then we establish board priorities to focus on proposal considerations. So for instance, you identify a set of themes, isolate those themes, look at those proposals, instead of sitting down necessarily and looking at all 300 at once. And it allows you to act quickly on quick wins for the county. So how can you get some of this money out the door quickly, on things you agree on? And then focus on your deliberation time on things you might not entirely agree on at first. And one thing I want to note, and why it's important to get at least some of this money rolling, is funds cannot be reallocated after 2024. So, while you can still be spending past that, if a project went downhill for one reason or another, you have that window to claw that money back and reallocate it. After 2024, if a project goes downhill, that money is going to go back to the federal government. So that's just something to be aware of, in terms of how you decide to move forward in the next, you know, six months here. All right, any questions?
All right. Commissioner Antor first, and then Commissioner Bolkowski.
What's our starting number again? Where are we at?
The funding number?
The funding number right now.
Well, I think we have 127. We've allocated almost 11 million at this point. We have at least tentatively said we would hold back 25% of that. That's a board decision, but then the remaining 75% of the, what's half of the 11 million, is what, 80 million, 85 million?
Yeah. And there's some that we've already reported.
Okay, is today's-
Is my number reasonably right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Is today's session going to be available for people to watch?
It is being livestreamed, so yes.
Thank you.
87 million, sorry. Was that, okay. Commissioner Bolkowski?
Yeah, sorry for the little sidebar there with my colleague. I totally agree, or not necessarily agree, understand Slide 12, where proposals that aren't eligible won't move forward. However, I thought all projects are eligible through the magic of lost revenue.
So there's certain things, let's be specific on this. I was looking at a proposal, and it's not, not with this one, but, you know, they were asking for an endowment. You know, so they're very specific things that we would be pulling out, based on that.
And did we get a clear number on what our lost revenue potential could be declared?
I think the potential is 100% at this point. That's my understanding, so. But we don't know that for sure until we get to that point.
Jeff is coming up, maybe he's got a further comment on that.
What point will we get at?
So, the latest number I saw was about $80 million of lost revenue, but we have to calculate it each and every year at the end of December. So, there's all these complex formulas you have to put in with rate of growth, rate of expected growth, and all these other factors that have to go in, so. But the latest number I heard was 80 million.
But 80 million could be, up to 80 million, declared lost revenue, and we don't have to go through the pots? As long as it's not an endowment?
Correct. Well, you have more flexibility depending on the way you allocate it, yes.
But it's still not unlimited flexibility.
It's not unlimited, but it definitely, most of the projects that might not have been eligible in, without lost revenue, almost stay eligible because of lost revenue.
The limitations are small.
Much, yes.
But they do exist, and we want to pay attention to those.
Yes, yes, definitely, definitely, because don't want to have to pay it back.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Wooden?
Just on that note, I thought it was my understanding that the lost government revenue, I'm trying to pull up the overview of the regs, there's still the caveat that it has to be placed on services that this body normally provides for. And so I would assume that the lost revenue has some kind of tie to what our general fund allows us to fund.
It's anything that a government like yours.
Okay.
It is quite broad.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I've got a test, I can walk that through, that we've created, but yeah, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Jones?
Can you address on the sheet, why there's blanks, why we have empty information in some spots?
It's in the-
On what sheet are we looking at?
The spreadsheet that has-
The spreadsheet.
I believe that some of the proposals have empty information.
Well, this is listing all of them that came through.
Right.
And this is not necessarily those that are eligible, you haven't gone through that assessment.
Nope, this is just a direct poll.
And then, we're looking at 1.9 billion is the cost of all proposals?
The total cost of every idea that was given to us, yep.
Yep, 1.9 billion. And then, help me understand this plus 60 and this minus 60, because I'm looking at a sheet of 315. You have 316 completed proposals. What's the plus 60 and the minus 60 in this?
So this, we moved 60 out of those proposals that isn't in that list you've got there, and we moved them to the ideas, and that's how they're being considered as ideas. And as I said, the test on that was, do they have any specifics? Or was it just a general idea that ended up in the portal?
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Burl?
Yes, thank you, Chair. You know, I'm not sure how clear we were when all this, we kind of set out on this path, but, you know, keep in mind, we have a lot of asked in county projects that we're going to be having as well. So this pot of money, to spread out there with all these requests, is not near as large as it really looks. So, again, there's going to be a lot of winners, a lot of losers, and a lot of people probably upset with us. But again, keep in mind, almost $2 billion, and only 127 million. So again, there's going to be a lot of unhappy people with us, so. But again, keep in mind, we got, again, county projects that are going to total a good amount of dollars, and not a lot will be left, so.
Yeah, where is the status of the county asks for that?
Thank you. We did ask each of the departments to refine their list from last year of potential ARPA projects, and those were due to us last Friday, so we're organizing those and can share them with the board too, as soon as we get them all pulled together.
But they're not included in the 1.9 billion?
Correct.
And we don't know yet what the cumulative amount of those asks are.
Right.
Probably.
And that dollar figure you just shared, I just want to be clear, that that is the estimated cost from the proposers of the full project?
Right.
Not the specific amount they're asking from us.
So they might have a $100 million project, they're only asking 20 from us?
Correct. And some proposers didn't have a real solid feel for the amount yet, so they gave a range, so it's hard to report that, because it's a bit variable. But in our next round of information for you, we'll make sure that the proposers give us an exact amount they want from County ARPA.
But Commissioner Burl's comment still stands, it is the amount of ask that well exceeds the availability.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
I can ask a process question on that. So, if you go back to someone looking for a specific amount, is that going to be after it's determined if the project's even qualified? I mean, I'm trying to figure out at what point in the process we get that far, because what if it doesn't even get that far in our process? I'm really trying to get the process figured out.
So, and maybe that's, either Dave or Jenny can respond a bit to the process. I think we did submit that last draft of the process document to commissioners, by email at least. So, maybe, did you hear the question and can respond? Yeah?
Yeah, so, my initial inclination was to only ask for supplemental information from those proposals that are eligible under ARPA. But I'm beginning to rethink that, given some of the comments this morning about the funds that can be used more generally, and perhaps the commissioners want to keep those projects in the mix as well, so that the additional funds, that we have more flexibility, not ultimate flexibility, as David explained, but more flexibility, maybe you want to continue to consider those. That's something we'll need to talk about.
I think that the, one of the points would be that, to the extent that we conclude, or Guide House concludes, a project that's submitted is not eligible, that that decision is communicated effectively back to the proposer, and with at least the opportunity to clarify if they think that we've missed the mark on that, so that at least it's clear that at the end of the day, if they don't fit it, they don't fit it.
I think the other answer to Commissioner Jones's question would just be that in August, there will be a chance for additional information. So, with, when the portal was initially set up, it wasn't set up to take pictures and architectural renderings, and full budgets, and all that sort of thing. And so the thought was to apply a couple filters, and then ask those who are remaining if they would like to put in any additional information. So, refining the cost would certainly fall within that.
I had a recommendation note on this, in terms of process, is that you could go out endlessly and ask for more information from every proposal, but if you have enough information here to decide if this is even something worth considering, you can narrow that down, so you don't get lost in the weeds of every proposal, and you only focus on the weeds of the things that seem to have the most energy behind it, from the community and from this board. And so I think that's, again, why we bundle things by themes, because it allows you to say, is this a thing we'd like to focus on? And if so, let's expand that discussion within the parameters of this theme.
And if you'll note in the process document, after we get through the eligibility consideration, and then the assessment of staff review, the board will be engaged in the preliminary measuring and rating of these, so that we'll see which of the projects are clearly in, which of them are clearly out. And then each of the providers contemplated now would be given an opportunity to come in and do a short oral presentation, so that you can question them. And then we would go to the full deliberative decision. Commissioner Wooden?
My question was a clarifying one, and is no longer relevant.
Okay, Commissioner Bolkowski?
How much conversation and such with other ARPA recipients? Meaning, like, I mean, quick reading through here, City of Rockford put a bunch of proposals in, as well as the City of Grand Rapids, you know? And so, I thought Grand Rapids got ARPA, did Rockford get ARPA?
Yes.
Wyoming? I mean, so if we got that, so are we talking with the lugs?
Well, we haven't yet, because proposals just came in. I did want to say that.
But I mean, in the sense that-
Again, if it's, it's back to, you know, the way we like to do non-government projects, even government projects, like our parks, it's, you know, like, a little bit of philanthropy, a bunch of government stuff, DNR grant, you know? I mean, so it's like, we're weaving this together, as opposed to, I mean, as was already noted, these were full costs, not what are they asking us for? And so if Rockford's going to throw in a little, like, what really is your priority? And then, I guess, when does that negotiation occur?
Well, I think that the contemplation was that one of the factors that the board wants to look at is bundled funding. To what extent is there availability of other funding? If it's a local entity that's asking for it, and they have ARPA money, are they putting any skin in the game? Without determining whether that's an eligibility issue or not, it is an issue we think the board, the commissioners, will be interested in when they make that final decision, so.
I did personally say to each of the lugs that talked to us about submitting projects, that it would be, in my opinion only, a much stronger application if they also allocated some of their ARPA money with the application. We did that at each community forum and each other contact, so.
But we're not necessarily excluding or demanding that either way, but, yeah.
But to the point of collaboration, as is on this slide, is something that we will be looking for, and we do have this window between now and the final report, to, you know, reach out, investigate, and see if there is a partner for funding on that.
Commissioner Antor?
Just curious, we've got 315 applicants. I'm looking through it, and there's a lot of pie in the sky, I mean, totally unreasonable stuff. Are we going to just chop them off? I mean, I understand, you know, the shotgun approach, to see what sticks, but I'd like to reward some of these people that are coming in at more reasonable numbers, that are looking to leverage or have partial funding, that understand this process a little bit better. And I'm wondering if the people that are asking for, you know, crazy numbers, are they going to be the ones squawking the loudest if they don't get it? And yet they're coming up with these unreasonable requests. I just hope we keep an eye on that. I'd rather reward people that are taking this a little bit more seriously, I guess.
Right. So, one of the things I think is important to think about, in terms of, as I said, and I'm going to go to this slide really quick, this layering of information. So, we may or may not have a great proposal, but if there's a lot of proposals in an area that speak to something, that should be heard, right? And so, if we hear that there is, for instance, a lot of great ideas around, I'm going to pick something out of the sky, parks, there's a bunch of parks, some of these parks ideas might be, you know, totally unrealistic, but they're within the idea of parks, and so we should see them as that. And then if you decided you want to move forward with parks, isolating parks, looking at those proposals, and then at that point saying, well, these are the realistic ones, these are the ones we really want to look at. But I think narrowing it down that way, instead of taking them out earlier and removing them ahead of time, I think that that takes away from the narrative part of what we're trying to get at here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, just so it's clear as well, that Guide House is not being retained to do that decision-making process. Their job is to put this together, to package it in a way that we understand it, and that we can see how it varies by proposal, resonates with the values that we're getting from our work. But at the end of the day, what's reasonable and unreasonable is something the 19 folks around this DAS have to determine. Yeah. Yes, Commissioner Jones?
I could circle back. So we have the public input part, we've checked the box. If we don't give anything to a public request, we're not required to, correct?
Right.
This has done its job. We've asked for public input, we've got it, but when I listen to all the comments around the table, it sounds like we're trying to figure out how to, figure out how much goes to public projects, and yet, we're not obligated to give anything to public projects. We were obligated to get input. And I wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Correct?
Yep, that is correct. So, in the categories, you have five categories, a lot of proposals, government services, facilities, that's probably where we're going to get our departments making their proposals. In theory, this board can conclude that all 87 million of that should go toward one public project. There, you could do that.
I just think it's really important, when we have these updates, to, I think we're really missing a big part of this pie, which is our own internal requests and project needs.
Yeah, those are going to be in the presentation. By the time we get to actual reports on what are the projects that are going to be reviewed, that will be in there.
It's just timing. We didn't make those part of the public process. We didn't put them through the portal. So, but you will get those when you get everything else.
But again, when I look at this, I feel satisfied. We've gone to the public, we've had meetings, we've asked for requests and proposals, and that box is comfortably checked as a requirement of taking this money. Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure about the comfortable part, but we did get the public. Yes, Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. First and foremost, I do think we should pay a compliment to Guide House and to the staff who helped facilitate those community engagement sessions. I went to, to myself, and I can at least say that, while one was maybe more, I wouldn't say contentious, but had a lot of very direct questions, the feedback I received from the attendees was that they were appreciative of the opportunity, and didn't feel they had that same opportunity with other government bodies when deciding how to use these funds. And, you know, while I do understand the vital internal projects that we should be considering, I also think it's valid to remember that there are things that we can use our general fund dollars for. We just have heard it a number of times, we have certainly not 127 million, but we have 25, 24 million in our strategic capital fund. And we've done a very good job at building that fund. And there are things that we have, there are proposals in this spreadsheet, many of them ranging in their size, breadth, and forethought, but there are many in here that touch issues that we have discussed at this DAS as critical, but have lacked the ability to make as substantive an impact as we'd like to. And so, I just would want us to think more than just, to borrow the comments of my colleague checking a box, but making sure that we are drawing from this from real inspiration to- checking a box, but making sure that we are drawing from this from real inspiration, to make sure that we use the dollars that are more flexible to tackle the issues we have wanted to tackle, but have not had the means to do so. And remember that we have, we have often talked about maximizing the impact with all the dollars we've received, whether it's future infrastructure dollars, whether it's ARPA, whether it's our own internal dollars, and making sure that we do our best to maximize that impact and then ensure that the vital county projects that are coming down the pike are fulfilled. So, thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Steck. You know, in the future, as we kind of weed out some of these projects, you know, some that are ineligible, I would like to see some sort of estimate on what sort of financial impact these projects could have in the future for our community, and figure out, you know, is, are some of these projects maybe going to be good sources of, you know, future revenue that are going to be bringing people to the area, or are they maybe going to be more of a drain? So how can we gauge that? I'm not exactly sure. That's for, you know, the people that do that kind of stuff to figure out. But I would like to see some sort of gauge, like, about the fiscal impact of these proposals.
Yeah, so that's part of our, you know, what we try to look at with impact. That being said, to do this for all 300 proposals is crazy. You can go get a PhD for that. But, you know, as we isolate the themes that we're interested in, we can then dive into that and try to put numbers around this. I mean, there's plenty of studies we can go find to create some sort of cost-benefit analysis. I would layer on top of that not just financial, but also human, you know, and what does the impact look like, and do we know from evidence-based interventions in the past, what is the best way to move forward in, say, we want to do a mental health program, here are the ideas, what actually has the biggest bang for its buck?
All right. Commissioner Wolkowski.
Yeah, because it, kind of following up with Commissioner Wooden and others, that I'd be coming to appreciate more and more the themes, because the themes are, at one level, you know, what is our strategic plan over the next five to 10 years? So that this community input where, you know, well, I said arts and culture was number one, but I didn't mean that, arts and culture, you know, so that'll be interesting, but, you know, because these are pretty big themes. But, but then again, for us to decide what really is the county's role in arts and culture, if there is one at any, you know, and so I really appreciate this process to, to help decide that, because like, that example of mental health, you know, it's what, what really, what should we be doing in mental health? And there's a bunch of proposals in here, and there's a bunch of proposals that didn't make it to here for whatever reason, and how do we invest more into it? Like, a mental health court to triple its capacity, I'm guessing it's, well, it might make its way up through, but for us to say, hey, these are great ideas, however, as county, our job is to run the courts as effectively as possible. And again, I'm, I'm kind of using that as an example, but also something my belief, I'm thinking, as I'm making it up, or speaking as I'm making it up. But again, like, what really is our role as county commission in this piece, you know, and, because, I don't know if it's a good use of our dollars, but, golly jeepers, can we get busloads of people to Lansing, because for some reason they don't seem to be listening to us well enough, or, or maybe, maybe they'll listen better with that $8 billion they got sitting on the shelf, you know, because that could go a long way on some leveraging of dollars.
Well, you can't use the money for lobbying, so that's ineligible.
Drats! I'll take a, I'll bring some empties back, and we'll pay for the cash.
He was talking about public transportation, right?
Yeah, that's right. But no, in all seriousness, that piece, though, of, of how does this inform, as opposed to just saying, oh, thanks for your idea, unfortunately, it didn't make the cut. And I know it won't be that crass. I get a lot of rejection letters in the mail, because I run a nonprofit, and we ask a lot of people for money. So if you're not getting a lot of rejections, you're not trying hard enough. So, I'll get off that, but to say, I'm, I'm really enjoying this, so I know it's going to be extremely painful, and I know friends who I encourage with proposals in are going to tell me, Dave, but you didn't. So anyways.
Yeah, we'll have to stretch all a little bit.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner McCoggriff.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to reiter, or, you know, to, to support what Commissioner Wooden said in terms of, you know, just wanting to make sure that we are fully considering, considering the, the public proposals that were put in here. I do not want our constituents to feel like this was just an exercise. And I know that we have priorities, and I really like this idea of the grouped themes, because I feel like that would at least give weight to the work that they put in, to say that this is what we feel as a community that we need, and here's an idea about how to get it done. So I just want to make sure that whatever we do, that we're communicating with the public in terms of letting them know, being transparent about the process, for one, of review and evaluation, and then providing feedback in terms of if they didn't get selected and they had a really good proposal, maybe when funding becomes available at some later date, that they have an opportunity to, to submit that idea again for our consideration. But I really, really want us to consider what they've put forward, and not just prioritize our county projects over theirs. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I think we have had some conversations, recognizing that it is likely, at the end of this process, there will be a number, maybe a large number of very good projects that we end up having to say no to, because this board has concluded not to engage it in ARPA. Having said that, I think we also are looking for a way, how do we encourage those proposers to find a good home? Where could that project get better funding? Where can it go from here? So I don't think the idea is that we're just simply going to throw them back and say, thanks for your letter, but we're going to look for ways that we can be supportive of that. All right. Further questions or comments? I mean, I think the discussion here already reinforces what I believe this process is going to take, and that is a lot of hard work. No matter how well you package it for us, Dave, no matter how well you compartmentalize it, there's no way to avoid the fact that we will have a significant number of both internal and external projects requested for funding, and we're going to have to sort through it. And at the end of the day, using our best sense of judgment and respect for each other's opinions, because I don't think we're all going to agree right out of the box on where we land with this. But at the end of the day, we have to come back with a responsible decision of what's the most appropriate application of these dollars. And, and it has to be done relatively soon. If you look at that process document out there, it is targeting that we'll get through the process of narrowing the number, getting the subsequent information from them if they wish to submit it, identifying who we want to hear from, sitting down and listening to the proposers' oral presentations, and I was just thinking in my head, let's say we're down to even 75 proposals at 15 minutes, that's if, Dave, you don't ask any questions.
[laughing]
At 15 minutes per proposer, that's, that's a lot of time. So, this is a big investment of our energy and our time to get to the finish line on this. And then we'll get to that deliberation, and I have no illusions that that deliberation will be quick and easy. We're all going to feel passionately about certain perspectives on this, and where we think the community is best served by where these dollars are applied. And again, I think if we're able to do that with respect for each other's opinions and perspectives, we will land somewhere that at the end of the day, this will make a difference. So, with that, what's our next step?
Well, next step will be that final report, where we will walk through, as you see here, actually broken down, the themes layered in with all of these parts, the survey, the proposal, and the ideas. So you can start getting a sense of how is this all layering together? How is this all creating a narrative? How can we start thinking about this? And we will deliver that, and then we will also probably be talking at that point about county priorities, and how did those start playing into this discussion?
So this board will next be engaged with getting these reports, beginning to review and evaluate all that information, the commentary from, like, from Guide House and from staff leadership with respect to these. And then our next substantive report is August 25?
25, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Anything else, Dave or Jenny? Al?
We're good.
We did it. We have public comment yet to go through, if anyone from the public is here that wishes to, where's your tie? Commissioner Womack's going to lend you his coat. I said, just remind everybody, the eyes right up here.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan, 49504. To talk about the proposal that I have sent in for the esports tournament, just want to give you guys a little bit of information about esports. Forty-five percent of students that are involved in any type of, type of sports, school sports or activities, actually get involved in esports. Esports and education creates student achievement, scholarships, careers, leadership, teamwork, digital citizenship, life skills that students and people gain from playing esports, is teamwork, conceptual thinking, resiliency, and sportsmanship. I'm really big on sportsmanship. Career exploration, art, audio, engineering, data, esports, financing, marketing, facilities, IT, gaming, design, legal, writing, publishing, quality assurance, and professional gamers. The reason why I really want to host this esports tournament is because I really want to create opportunities for youth. I like to reach out to the colleges, our local high schools, and be able to bring them to a esports tournament where EA Sports is the actual host. Like, we can have billboards, we can actually bring EA Sports, a billion-dollar gaming company here, where students and colleges could engage with this company in person. A lot of people that play video games in our county could be able to interact with a billion-dollar gaming companies. It'd be cool, it'd be innovative, it'd be able to create a lot of opportunities for our youth in our county. As I said, it's been a creative way that different states, even in county parks, there's also parks and recreations around, around the country, Texas, Washington, here in Michigan, I don't know too many parks in Michigan, but I also know that a lot of our parks and recreations across the states are also getting involved in esports, and they're creating esports programs, and they'll be able to create some different economic stability in neighborhoods and opportunities in neighborhoods that usually don't get those type of opportunities. And so not only is it a space where it's a billion-dollar industry, but we can also be one of the leaders, one of the innovators, one of the people that actually get on the fiscal year for EA Sports, because you actually have to get on the fiscal year for EA Sports, which is a billion-dollar gaming company, to be able to even host one of their tournaments. And so I would love for us, the county, our Grand Rapids, Michigan, I mean, it's about streaming, streaming to get millions of views, that's where a lot of revenue come. I mean, I'd rather see something positive, because when I actually watched the execution of Patrick Leoria, I couldn't sleep for eight days until I actually smoked some cannabis on the eight-day, and I fell asleep, and I'm not lying about that. And so I'm, I'm still traumatized about that. And recently, with the shootings at the Grand Wood Lounge, I was there, I have a video I can play, I watched the shooting at the Grand Woods Lounge. I was seeing a pool of blood, I seen the woman that got shot, and they had to tie some, some clothing around her leg. I watched the guy who was on the ground on the left side, right side of the building, he got shot in the leg, it was a guy who got shot in the arm and in the head. I was there, I have video of that, it was a guy that was still, that was still in that bar that had a pistol on him with a mask on, and that could have went a lot worse. So, when I come in, I speak to you guys, and I, that same day after I watched that happen, I went to the King Park, and I ran the RBU Summer Basketball League, because to me, I, it's about the next generation of kids. It's about the next generation of kids, and I don't want that to be the, I don't want that kid, it was an African-American man that had that mask on with that pistol, a Draco, that's a gun with an extended clip. And I would definitely like to be able to stop those things from happening and do cool things in a city, in a county that can reduce violence and bring different demographics of people, the nerds, the rich kids, the poor kids, the kids that feel out of place in school. I would like to bring all of those kids together, because, I mean, I was an athlete in high school, I was the cool kid, and I was cool with all of those kids. And so I'd like to do something innovative for our county, something that can stimulate the economy, something that can actually bring people here, like one of the county commissioners said, and sorry if I took too much time.
I hope you're cool with, I have to cut you off because of your past.
Thank you, I appreciate it, though.
And don't forget, that's Commissioner Womack's coat.
[laughing] Thank you. I'll give it to you after the meeting.
All right, anyone else? All right, if there is nothing else miscellaneous, yes. I know you'll give your shirt off your back for your...
Yeah, I give my shirt off the back. I just want to thank for some of the things I heard in public comment that's talking about the violence that's rising in the community, and I think it was great that it was spoken here in this meeting, as we look at our ARPA funds and some of the things we're doing, and we talk about the quality of life, and just making sure that the youth, I remember all the youth of Kent County, because we have the urban violence that we have, we've got suburban schools in Michigan, and thank God it hasn't happened in Kent County yet, but we have people who are stressed out in the suburbs as well, and in some of the suburbs closer to Oakland County, you know, we have school shootings. So, just thinking, keeping our young people in mind, and whatever we can do to make some connections to them, to let them know that it is a brighter future if you hold on, and taking people's lives isn't necessary, but we need that connection to the youth. It might be through sports, it might be through the schools, it may be through our parks and recreation. But thank you for continuing to bring that focus to us about the youth.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I do concur with our chair's vision on how this will go forward, and my point with my previous comments is that, that we learned quite a bit by going through the public process. I went to one of those in Rockford, and I wanted to make sure we do have on the radar the county projects as well, and how that also will potentially fit into these categories. And I'm looking forward to this process to see what we can do, and if we can't do things with ARPA money, to find other avenues to help. And I think, actually, as a future leader, we can use this to help even guide what we do with our county funding going forward, knowing this is what we've heard from the public. So I think this was an incredibly valuable process, and look forward to doing what we can for those transformational projects. And at the end of the day, I want to be comfortable knowing that the money went to transformational projects. And I know that's a message we've been sharing consistently. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.